What's involved, you know, per se?
Sure.
Yeah, I currently go to those emergency preparedness meetings and it's mostly nurses and health agents that do attend the meetings. So I can see that at Dyton really, you know, I think we need a health agent at some point in some capacity, hot time, full time, whatever. I know we have some now contracted with the businesses. But that's a very important role, I think, for some of the people in this town and the way it's growing.
And the other thing too is if you, if we hear the job description a lot, whatever would entail a full-time position if it's administrative support. The other thing we would have to look at in formulating that job description is how are we covering all this stuff right now? We know what you do, we know what he does, there are inspectors that work under him that cover stuff. So we don't want to duplicate effort. We have people trained and knowledgeable in their areas to do the things like you, you focus on what you focus on. All the health issues Tom Ferry and I have covered. And just as you said, when you go there, there are people that would be at the same level as you, nurses, public health workers, that type of thing, health agents, whatever. When Mr. Ferry and I go to, I'll call first, solid waste management, okay? The people in the room are of similar background.
Position.
Exactly. So that everyone that's there understands what's being talked about in their area of study or expertise. Excuse me. So I know, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you for that.
Excuse me.
Mr. O'Connor?
Any other questions?
I have a couple of comments. First, I want to thank you and all of your committee members for the time that you've been in. This is perhaps one of the most important things that this government faces, is we have a Board of Health that is far too busy and we have a board of selectmen who are trying to run a town and don't have the time to effectively run a board of health. So the couple of points I want to make are merely to the fact that we have to get this right. We've been doing this for two years now and a lot of people have spent a lot of time and energy on it. I can tell you personally, as a duly appointed member, agent for the Board of Health, that everybody does their job. Selectman Gulat and I probably feel most of the calls, health-related. And I can't tell you how numerous they are. Every day, the tour was dealing with health-related issues. Our agents, for the most part, have full-time jobs elsewhere. I have a full-time job in the building department, yet I do what I can to be a team player. Kevin Bonato has a full-time job at Free Town. Araciel is the one who has, you know, the part-time availability. With that said, I'm not sure that a full-time clerk is really what the Board of Health needs. I echo what Selectman Gulat says, that more discovery has to be done to see if whether or not that's warranted. But I think perhaps the emphasis could shift more towards can we do more with having an agent who's available during the day? The other point that I want to make is, and I have a great deal of respect for the individuals that you've suggested to be the first Board of Health. But all three of those individuals are not available during the day. One of them is retired, Selectman Piers, who I have a great relationship with, I still call him Rostam today because he's the one I agree. But he works a retirement job that keeps him extremely busy. Now, I know if he's called upon, he'll make himself available. But he's the only one. The other two of them can't be available during the day. And quite frankly, when this all came to fruition, I was finally looking at a light at the end of the tunnel, that although I'm a team player, I have a lot going on in that office. And I would like for my phone not to ring during the day with health-related questions, unless I'm actually needed, because it's something that I have expertise.
Or email I send to you.
Or email I get. You're right. So with that said, you know, I think the three individuals are certainly competent, but the fact that they're not available during the day is going to lead us right back to where we were before we started this. And that's a concern, that's a great concern that I have, because ultimately, we want this to move forward.
I just, I just don't see a Board of Health functioning, availability in the daytime. I think if you look to most Boards of Health in communities, they're mainly on the advisory level. I think you need a health agent.
I would agree with that, except I actually hold assistant health positions in two other communities. And in those two communities, we have a full-time health agent. We don't have that here.
No.
And that's the problem. So in the absence of a full-time health agent, your Board of Health now becomes the go-to when you have problems or issues that arise with your agents. So in the absence of an agent, which seems to be the role that Selectman Gulat and I have assumed, because we don't have a full-time health agent, so we sort of act as that person. With a Board of Health who is available during the day, in the absence of an agent, they could take some of that workload off us.
Well, where are you going to find those people? Where are you going to find those people?
Well, the selectmen in Free Town, three of them, two of them are retired, they also act as the Board of Health. They're available during the day when I, if I have, you know, on a Friday, if I have a call. I'm not saying that this is the answer. All I'm trying to raise is the question as to whether or not we're actually going to see some relief if we move forward with the recommendations. And just like Selectman Zagrasis said, I mean that with no disrespect, but I'm telling you, if someone was in the trenches, on the ground, during the day, on a daily basis, I just don't see how it's going to alleviate any of the problems that we currently have.
Mr. O'Connor, can I ask you a question? And I appreciate the concerns, and I, because I get the emails too, and I know you guys are constantly dealing with health-related issues. Is your concern that you need them to be physically present, or if, for example, Mr. Tanis or Mr. Piers can respond to emails in real time when they get them, when they get the health-related things? Does that suffice?
I'm not concerned about communications. I'm concerned about when you must be physically available. The inspection that we did, we were there. We couldn't have done that, except in the daylight. As a matter of fact, we all remember, we all froze to death. And the one before, we had, we had the high school, bright sunny day, it was like 40 below. But what I have found this time around on the Board is that personally, I have been required, I am available, so that's the difference. But personally, I've been required to put in more daytime hours for Board of Health-related, whether they're issues or meetings or whatever, because all of it's increased. When I was on the Board the last time, I don't remember you having to go to the meetings that you cover.
Well, Denise was doing the job and she's been working all day, you know, so she can't go to meetings.
Right. So we appointed a town nurse, so that you could handle that. The other thing I will say is, when I was on the Board the last time, we didn't have all of the emergency preparedness that we all deal with now on a regular basis.
That's been a complaint, but almost all the towns and cities just it's bad.
And back in the day, we had something called the Director, Civil Service Director. What is that? That goes back to the days of the Cold War, when you had to have, you know, Civil Director of any half.
Civil Defense.
Civil Defense, that's right.
That's the word.
And all the civil defense stuff came down from the federal government, and it just kind of came down. We didn't have training sessions, we didn't have drills, we didn't have call downs, all of that stuff. The other thing is, my first, pretty much my entire first year, I spent, from a Board of Health perspective, trying to get us out of the stormwater mess we were in. And I knew nothing about it, which means I had to get up to speed and figure out how to do this. And what I said to Mr. Piers and Mr. Hagman, "Guys, I don't know anything about that at all, but I'm willing to take it on," which means you guys have got to really deal with Board of Selectmen and all of the Board of Health stuff, because I'm really, I've got to focus on this, because we're going to get fined again, and the next time is going to be 15. So anyhow, that's how we divided up the task. In the meantime, the bridge project had come along prior to that, and I volunteered and got appointed to that, so then I just continued that. What has happened now, I'm going to knock on wood, I will say stormwater is under control only because of Mr. Ferry's involvement. And he's good when it comes to stormwater. Tommy called me, I call him. But what also has happened is, just as Mr. Aguirre said, Selectman Gulat calls in or sends the email, or he goes to us and says, "We got an inspection to do, I'm going to set it up and you arrange a schedule." But anyhow, that involved the three members of the Board of Selectmen, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, the Highway Superintendent, an outside contractor, a person independent of the whole thing, and Mr. Aguirre. And it was done on a morning. It was not only a site visit, we walked around the property. There was a stream running through it, and we had to look at a lot of things that were involved. Everything from stormwater, to pollution, to rubbish, to buildings in, structurally in bad conditions. When I was on the Board the last time, I never did one of those types of inspections. I've done a number of them now. And the other thing is, because there is so much going on and there are so many meetings to cover, I rely on Mr. Aguirre, I rely on Mr. Ferry, because solid waste management falls under the Board of Health. Mr. Ferry is responsible for the town landfill, and every job nobody else does. I rely on him heavily. He relies on me as far as the stormwater. The sidewalk project is Mr. Ferry's. However, there's land-taking easements. I'm the person who did that for the bridge project. So of course, we got to work together. That particular project, we've had Mr. Aguirre involved, we had Mr. O'Brien from the Water District, we had some trustees, we had the principal, so many people that I really didn't work with before. But now, because of what's happening, we get involved with this. The functions we don't have to do that are health-related really are drinking water, because we have two districts separate in town. And the wastewater end of it is separate commission. Yet, the, whether it's the EPA or the DEP, when they talk water, they're talking all water. We talk about drinking and wastewater and stormwater. They say water is water, in Town of Dyton, you're responsible. So obviously, there are reports that take place from the Town of Dyton, they know we don't do drinking water, meaning the Board of Health. But also, the responsibility for that, even though it's, there were two separate districts, it falls to the Board of Health. So thank goodness, in a way, we don't have to be concerned about drinking water and waste disposal. But the, and again, when we, when we get to the point of looking at support staff, whether we call it administrative assistant, a part-time health agent, or whatever, and start putting on paper the jobs that we need to have covered and figure out what kind of a person needs to cover them, whatever the title is. The way we'll have to do that is say, "How are we covering all this stuff right now?" And that's where we get in with Mr. Aguirre and all the inspectors, and the other people that we don't normally associate with Board of Health services, like Mr. Ferry. So the, so as I said, going back to what I had said before, when you said, "It's something that we have to look at," we have to look at these things. I agree completely. And I agree with, with Mr. Zagrasis and Mr. Aguirre, probably because, I'll put it this way, the three of us have done the fieldwork at one time or another, and recently done fieldwork. So maybe we're more aware of what's actually happening now. And the town, quite frankly, this town is unique on how it handles all of the things that get done. Our neighboring community has a stormwater manager, elected position with, I'll say, a good-sized stipend. They also, they had a health agent who just retired, and I would assume they're going to replace him with a full-time health agent. And they have a appointed Board of Health, but that health agent really did the bulk of the work, and you know.
That's what I think we need to do. We need to separate the Boards, but it's not going to do what you guys are doing. We need a health agent. I think we need a health agent before we need a Town Administrator. Now, I may be ignorant of all of the Town Administrator we do, but that's my personal opinion, and I thought that since before we moved on to the Administrator.
Getting, and since you brought up Town Administrator, when, assuming we get a Town Administrator and somebody is appointed, the work that that person is going to do and how they're going to interact with the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen, and various other appointed and Boards, commissions, all of that, I don't know. I know in one neighboring community that has an appointed Board of Health and had a health agent who retired and I assume will be replaced, that health agent pretty much ran that department.
And that's what you need.
And you know who I'm referring to.
That is what you need. We need that. But I think that we, you know, need to do this, get the Boards separated.
Well, the people have made it, yeah.
And everything else.
The people have told us, "Get it done."
Yeah.
And really, that's what we asked them to do. So Mr. O'Connor's committee did the initial legwork, and then we asked them, "Okay, now that you've done that, would you take on the duties and the operation?" And so that's where we are right now, all right? But no, I certainly recognize the work that you've done on both of these committees and what went into it, you know?
Mr. O'Connor, I did just want to mention, just because we were just talking about it, you know, when I came to the meeting last night, that was one thing I asked you guys. And I asked Mr. Tanis and I asked Mr. Piers, who were recommended by the committee to be on the newly split Board of Health, about their hours. And I said, "I know what it's like, because I work too, and I've had to juggle the visits, and it's hard, you know, sometimes." But like I said, I have people who are willing to accommodate me, and I appreciate that. And I was assured that if there were some advance notice, they could do some site visits, you know, they could coordinate it with work, so just like what I did. And they also assured me that in an emergency, they would absolutely be able to be there. So, and I'm only going to speak for myself, I felt like they were being sincere and genuine and honest. So I told, I'll say publicly what I told Chairman O'Connor last night. Do I feel like you've incorporated all of my personal concerns that I raised into your final proposal? No, you didn't. But am, do I feel comfortable with the scheduling availabilities of the people, the individuals you recommended? I do, after the meeting last night. So personally, I can, I can throw my support behind this, but I will certainly respect the decision of the Board and our health professionals as well.
Just like to say one final thought that I'll yield.
Okay.
I don't want anybody at home to misinterpret that I'm not in support of moving forward. I just want to make sure that we do it correctly. There are two things that you won't ever hear me say. You'll never hear me say that I'm not a team player, and you'll never hear me say no when I'm asked to do something.
That's true.
But there, I also plan to stay here through my 10 to years into retirement, so I want to be part of doing things the right way.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So are you second behind Nancy for that?
No, I'm going, I'm going up first.
He doesn't want the unit.
So, thank you, Mr. Zagrasis, for basically saying what I was about to say, which is, last evening, we had that conversation with Mr. Tanis and Mr. Piers about their availability during the day, and they, they made that commitment to do that. Mr. Tanis, in fact, said that if he's at his other place of employment, he's 45 minutes away, should it be necessary for him to be here in Dyton, and he has his supervisor's understanding that that would be okay to do. Obviously, certainly could be a circumstance where he also faces an emergency there, but what are the odds of that? But in any case, they did, they understand the commitment and the need, and they've, they've made that commitment to be available as needed during, during the day. It's, so my own personal comment is, it's not perfect, but, but this gets things started. And I don't think you'd want to start this with three people who don't know anything about this work.
We can agree on that.
And get, get it away from the Board of Selectmen as much as we can. So that these three gentlemen can move it forward and, and help to shape it from a position of doing the work.
And I would, I would just like to say, and I, and I'm sure as Mr. Tanis and Mr. Piers are former Selectmen, they would understand our concern as Selectmen, not as Board of Health members, but as Selectmen, that once the purpose of the Board being split is so that they can function independently, so that we're no longer getting the calls to field Board of Health issues. And I think Mr. Aguirre is sort of intimating at the same thing. Of course, he'll still be involved, obviously. But I do hope they understand that, and I'm sure that they do. Because again, we don't, you know, once the Board of Health is split, in terms of health-related issues, I do think the Board of Selectmen should know what's going on, but they'll call the shots in terms of the health-related issues. And I would hope that if, since they know the buck stops with them when it comes to health-related issues, that they would make that time, especially if they were going to take the commitment to not have it fall in the lap of our Building Commissioner, or Selectman Gulat, or, you know, myself. And I'm sure that they do.
I got a comment and a question. I think it's very important, now that the townspeople in Dyton have, in effect, said, "Split them, we are, that's all done, we got that mandate from the town." I think it's very important that when the new Board is seated, the people in this town understand they will get the same level of service with the new Board that they got with the existing Board.
Absolutely.
Which means whether it's a phone call, or the email, or the photographs, however we get it, or, you know, somebody comes to the door and says.
DVDs.
Oh, DVDs, don't forget DVDs, yeah. That hopefully, the split that has occurred, when everything is in place, is going to pick up where the existing Board is, and they're going to grow. All right? So that townspeople will say, "We're not getting the service we used to get, I'm waiting for a call, nobody calling me back," so that kind of stuff. So that's what I'm looking for. Like you say, experienced people who have an idea of what happens within the Board of Health, that can, if you will, hit the ground running, that we can say to them, "Okay, this is where we are, these are issues that we have, this is what we've done to resolve them, and maybe there's another inspection required, or another, we got to meet with them," or whatever. So everyone out there who might have a complaint or a concern knows, there are people available that can respond to you timely. In all honesty, I don't think the Jim Aguires, the Tom Ferries, the Electrical Inspector and a few others will ever be away from this, because they're the support people that we rely on right now for specific areas. Quite frankly, I can ask Mr. Ferry or Mr. Aguirre anything and say to them, "You help me with this, this is the situation." Both of them are, one of them will say, "Oh yeah, you know what, I know, let me get you this," or "I can do that," or "I know that." So, so I think that's always going to be there, as long as these gentlemen are in the system. The other question, the question I wanted to ask you was, on your committee that did the work, both the previous work to split the Board and the recommendations, you had a health agent who, I believe it was health agent, he's in two towns? Joe?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Swansea and Somerset.
And because of his experience and what he actually does, is there anything you can think of, and I don't want to put Joe on the spot, but anything you can think of that in looking at this whole thing, when we discussed, whatever the topic or section is, Joe felt important that, Joe was adamant that this should occur. Can you think of anything in the report that as a person actually working in the field in two communities, one that has an elected Board of Health and one that has an appointed Board of Health, so he's got, I was going to say, the best of both worlds, I don't know, but anyhow.
I don't know if that's how he described it.
Well, but he's, he's an active person, so I'm just wondering if there was anything that Joe said, "You want to make sure that this happens, or this be done, or make sure this is definitely covered or addressed," or whatever. So, and again, I don't want to put you on the spot either, but I know he was on your committee.
Right. I, I don't recall him bringing that particular wisdom to the table in any way that I could, you know, that's, that was explicit. I think he did bring certainly something to the table, one of which is, I just want to throw out there personally, is that you mentioned a vacancy in a neighboring town for a part-time health agent?
No, he was full-time.
Full-time. There's always the possibility, an important opportunity to share a health agent with another town, if there's, if there's the capacity to do that, that this town might not need a full-time.
Well, Somerset Swansea, Somerset Swansea, they do that now.
Yeah, so I think that's, if Joe shared anything, it's the trials and tribulations of doing that. But in any case, that is something to consider going forward, if a full-time health agent is not either within the budget or meets, or necessary to look at a part-time health agent who might be shared with another community, and that might be part of a bigger picture planned down, down the road, now that you have this separate Board of Health, is to consider forming some sort of shared service arrangement with other towns.
I don't know Joe's specific duties in each of the communities that he works in. I would assume they're similar. The gentleman that retired that I was talking about was Towner Rehoboth.
Okay.
And longtime health inspector. But he was also responsible for Title V, where we have a separate Title V. So, but I'm not saying that looking at a split like Somerset Swansea does, I think it's worth looking at. Because really, this is all new, and we're moving into a new area, and we want to cover as much as we, we've got to continue to cover everything we're doing, so.
And we will. But, you know, some people are going to have a burnout, you know, level.
No, I understand that.
And we're not a town, a sleepy town. I don't know what happened in the last six years, but I've always said, I thought I was coming to the country club, and I had no idea it was like this. Listen, we've been, we've been on a tear for quite a few years now, and I don't see it any. So all I see is the workload increasing. So by the same token, I've been asked by the Board, you've been very supportive, to get a permanent assistant in there for me. I also don't want to burden the taxpayers with another payroll, because eventually, things will even out. So in the meantime, it's just a juggling act of how you do it, how you manage things, and so far, things have worked out well. But I just see a very significant deficiency in our health department. And, you know, I really hope that we can solve the problem with this process. And it seems like we're getting there, I just think it needs a little tweaking.
Having been over, you know, right across the walls on the health agent, he does a lot of things that this health department doesn't do. He does all the side of the side, he's involved in a whole lot of stuff.
And that's what I said, it is a town, it's a sprinkling.
Right.
And the only reason we've gotten by all these years is because there's so many people willing to wear different hats, you know? The, that community has a separate stormwater manager. It started out appointed with a salary, something happened, I don't know all the details, but it turned into an elected position. So you, you run for that job now, and I don't know if it's a three-year term or what. But anyhow, I know a lot of large communities that have stormwater managers. It's split between the Board of Health right now, the management end that's paper, and the management end that's out in the field. It's the, it's the current Board of Health and the Highway Department. So, but anyhow, I, we've got a lot to look at, we've got a lot to digest, and you've put a lot, clearly, a lot of work into this, no question about it.
So what has to happen next?
Well, the Board of Selectmen, they have finished their task, their assignment, they've issued their final report. This now has to be reviewed by the Board of Selectmen. I would imagine it's going to be discussed at Department Head meetings, at least initially, to say, "We have the report." to say, "We have the report." I'm gonna make a motion later on tonight to take this under advisement, so that the Board of Selectmen will have a chance to review it, talk to department heads, talk to people who are actually doing these jobs now, whatever hat they're wearing on a given day, find out what they've got for input. I mean, we heard you speak, we heard Mr. Aguirre speak. Get all that information now, and try to come up with something that we can say, "Okay, Board of Health." I know the recommendation is to appoint the three people that were involved, three of the committee members. But there's also something in here about putting the word out, and it says, "Follow established procedures." We're gonna have to announce these and make it available. Because we don't know if there are people in this town, or, not our residents, but we've all said, if we could get, you know, pie in the sky, a physician, even a retired one, or a physician's assistant, or a nurse practitioner, or somebody with a medical background that could serve as a member of the Board of Health, all right? That would be a great resource for you, and they would be involved with, you know, because you do all your work, and I say to you, "So what happened?" But really, the responsibility for that is with you.
I can get a doctor.
Really?
That would be an advisor to the board, and be available for medical costs.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that would, like I say, that would be wonderful.
Get his name, why? Well, I have his name, but I'll talk to him.
The City of Tonton has the requirement, their Board of Health must all be MDs, and they have three MDs.
Believe me, that board was horrible.
All I can tell you is, and I know, and I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk about the...
I opened my fire mentalists.
I'm not, I'm not gonna...
Cameras rolling.
All I can tell you is, the city...
That's a long time ago.
Well, some of the members, I believe, are still there. But the requirement is, they must be MDs. We couldn't possibly, we couldn't have a requirement that one must be.
I know.
But in any case, I'm just saying, way back when Tonton set up their Board of Health organization, that's what they said they wanted, and they, fortunate they had enough over the years, people to fill the slots. But some of them have served for many, many years. I saw a notice come in the other day that that man was practicing medicine before my son was born.
So that means?
I mean, but in any case, it works in Tonton. But I think, we're gonna get to this. There's no question in my mind. But I believe we are gonna have to post this to the general public, and, because we don't know who's out there. And we real, and it says in here something, "Follow the normal procedure for when you have vacancies." Just like we keep announcing, we have committee vacancies, and we try to get volunteers. Oh, and we've got a good one for you. I'll just say that. We got an application today that I think...
A gem. I had never heard of this.
The one I showed you, actually, the person has volunteered for two committees and probably could serve on both our boards.
I believe one was open space.
That's what I'm referring to. Yeah. But anyhow, that one just came in, so it's not on the agenda tonight. But finally, we have somebody. But in any case, so that's what we're gonna have to do, is to get the input, and let, you know, at the Highway Department, there may be concerns that Mr. Ferry has, that, no, no. That turf is mine. I will continue to do that. The Board of Health may have oversight, but I'm not gonna let that one go, because of the nature of it, you know? And having worked with him closely the last time, and now, I gladly say, "It's all yours, Tom. Just let me know what I can do to help you, or when you're ready, give me the data so we can plug it in here, or if it's the budget, we gotta plug in something. Tell me what you think." So that has, that has been effective too, but...
You have to Google answer this, Ron.
Well, I was just concerned too about the time factor, because, you know, we're at the end of March, and so you've only got April and June.
But if you remember, and I'm not giving my personal opinion either way, but they were gonna appoint a committee and still be screening for a committee to be seated by July 1st. So if you really think about it, if the Board of Selectmen were to choose to just, you know, put it out there, the only thing that would be different is that you wouldn't have the three individuals that they recommended currently getting it up and running. You would just probably be waiting till...
July 1st.
Correct. And this is just my opinion.
The good thing is, no one's gonna rush this thing. Nobody's gonna say, "Hurry up, Board of Health, because this is yours." That isn't gonna happen.
Well, and we're working on things. We're working on a manual, like we have things that we're doing too on our end.
The kind of stuff that will be going to that Board of Health, it's not gonna be just throw it at them and say, "There's your job. Don't come to us." No, there's gotta be transition, because it's the kinds of stuff we've got in process that, we've got a May deadline.
Projects, yeah.
The MS-4 is May, we got, and that's in pretty good shape, because I gave that to Tommy. But we've also got the brand-new permit to work on, which is more extensive. So there will be, no matter who sits on that new Board of Health, there will be a transition period, because there has to be. You know, and whether it's you, or you, or other people that, gotta change my hat and put on the hat to do this, that's all gonna happen. So at least, it's not like we draw the line and say, "Before this, we did this. After this, you're on your own." No, it's not gonna happen like that. But we will certainly, it'll come up at a department head meeting, so they understand what's, what's in the works, and what we're looking at. And the other thing we've got to look at is the recommendation for the full-time position, the administrative support, our clerical support, whatever we're gonna call it. There is no money mentioned as far as this goes. I believe when the proposal was talked about splitting the two boards, it was not gonna create a substantial increase in expense to the Town of Dayton. Currently, that job is only 15 hours a week. At least, that's the budget split.
Okay.
So if we go to a 35-hour work week, that's a substantial increase. So obviously, we're gonna look at that too, because the hope was, we could, we could make the split, there would not be a significant increase in expense to operate the Board of Health. So we gotta look at that. But anyhow, again, I commend you for all the work, you and your committee, for all the work you've done twice in the steps you've taken, the first committee and this one.
So, two comments. One is, I think the town needs to be prepared for there to be additional expense in order for the Board of Health to do what it needs to do. And second of all, what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm wrong, is a third committee, the Dayton Board of Health Transition Committee?
No, no. No, no.
Poorly timed joke, Mr. O'Connor.
That's a proposal, and you think it's necessary. I know who we're gonna ask.
I think it's good hands to...
And then we get the screening committee before that, so...
I think it's good hands. I just know that my...
Where are we finding these people, Mr. O'Connor?
Our appointments on this committee expire on June 30th.
Yeah, yeah.
I like March 29th.
You know, this sounds like, before I was on the board, I was on the Finance Committee the last time, and the Board of Selectmen sent a memo to the Finance Committee and said, "We have got a number of pieces of town-owned land we want to dispose of. Give us your opinion." And I looked at it and said, "Opinion based on what? We don't know where this land is. We don't know what it is." So I came to the Board of Selectmen's meeting with a proposed plan. "We can't give you a recommendation, because we, we don't know anything. So I'm gonna recommend you, that, set up that, you know, dreaded word, set up a committee. This will be the Town-Owned Land Committee, or the Town Use, whatever. This committee will have to look at, research all the property that we say we own, and they're gonna make sure we own it first. The next thing they gotta do is classify it." And I gave them like five classifications. "All land has value, even if it's underwater most of the time, because that's Mother Nature land. You don't do anything with it." But anyhow, I gave them that memo, and the Board of Selectmen said, "Okay, we can do that." So a committee got set up, and they were active, and when I got elected to the board, they came in with their first report, they did their homework, here's the land we own, we know it's ours, they worked with Mary and all this, and they had a list of recommendations. Mr. Neely was one of the, I think he's still on the committee. Mr. Neely was the, I believe, the chair, and he presented his report one night. "Here it is, and we're all done." And I said, "No, no. You've done the initial assignment, you've done all of the legwork, that we now have a list of property we own, and you've recommended what you think the town should do with it." And some of it was eventually put up for auction. I said, "However, this list has to be maintained, and as Mary acquires property through tax title or whatever, donations, gifts, whatever, the list has to be updated, and you have to review the recommendations that are still standing. Is that property now something you still think we should hold? Or should we move that to the recreation list, or the, put this down for consideration to sell?" And Mr. Neely looked at me, and he says, something like about, "Well, we did our task." I said, "Yes, and they did it very well. However, it doesn't go away." So I'm glad to hear he's still on the committee from the original one. But anyhow...
It brought continuity to the committee for a fall. It was good. It was a very productive committee.
Absolutely.
Some committees can be productive. Most of them are.
Not to get into details, because I know we can't get into details. We had had a little discussion yesterday. Did that all work out okay?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow? Oh, okay, all right.
Five p.m.
That's fine, thank you.
And I did get the application to be Zoneyo's appeals to create the memorial for the Dyson project.
Oh, that's good.
So that'll be on the docket for equal. So that'll, that'll move that process forward.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, so before you leave the room, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that the, that we take the final report of the organization, the committee to study the organization of the Dayton Board of Health, under advisement for review by the full board, and for presentation to, at a department head meeting. And that we thank Mr. O'Connor and his board for the work they've done in doing the study and bringing us the final report.
I will step down and second that. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. The report is taken under advisement and will be presented to the department heads at a department head meeting going forward, and other various professionals. Thank you again, very, very much, Mr. O'Connor.
Ron, it took almost as long as it did to get all the photos and the stuff together for the book.
This is true. By the way, I heard you on camera say you wanted to be on the screening committee, so you can't take that back now.
Screening committee. Yes, correct. Yes. I...
It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube. I'm just gonna go see the gentleman downstairs, see how they're doing tonight.
Thanks, Ron.
So moving right along, the second piece of old business on the agenda is to review, discuss, and act to rescind the vote of March 22nd for a transfer from the reserve fund to the stormwater budget.
See that? We giveth and we take it back.
That's how easy it happens here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rescind the vote of March 22nd that approved a transfer from the reserve fund to the stormwater budget. The reason being that they looked at, they reviewed, the budget was reviewed again with the town accountant, and it was determined that the funding is not needed at this point. And any transfer that's required can be done within the budget after May the 1st. We won't be going to that reserve fund.
And that would be an end-of-year transfer?
No, no. End of year is when you finally close the books. After May the 1st, the Department of Revenue, the rules changed with the weed-whacker bill. There used to be a limit on what you could transfer. But a department can look at its budget and say, for example, "I need money in stormwater." Okay, where have you got money that you aren't gonna need?
Okay.
So it might be in supplies or contracted services or something. Now, when the town accountant is ready to close the books, and she sees, "Oh, maybe this account was overdrawn by a small amount, and this one here is..." At that point, departments, my department, I could go to you and say, "I need money to cover postage and fees for mailing that relate to tax bills and election," or whatever it was, "And I'm short $500. It looks like you've got money in your department." And you can say, and so the paperwork gets done, and it says, "Give my department $500 for the purpose to go into this account, our accounts." And I'm the receiving department, and you're the, if you will, sending department. Okay? So that's year-end closing, where within the budget, you can move money. Whereas, right now, that, with that change in the law, they look at it, and we can do the May 1st thing and still be okay.
And I will step down and second that motion that you made, Selectman Gular.
Yep, to rescind.
Any, yes, to rescind the vote of March 22nd. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. We have voted to rescind the vote of March 22nd. New business, the only, actually, the first piece of new business I have on the agenda is to review, discuss, and act Governor Charlie Baker's proclamation declaring the month of April as Keep Massachusetts Beautiful Month. So I will just, I will just read this. It says, "Whereas Massachusetts desires to protect and improve the physical appearance..." Improve, excuse me, it's in Old English. "...and improve the physical appearance and beauty of the Commonwealth's neighborhoods, towns, cities, and public spaces, and whereas a clean litter-free environment contributes to the emotional, physical, and economic well-being of our citizens, and whereas the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and several other groups across the Commonwealth offer opportunities and programs for residents to get involved in cleaning up their communities and our public spaces, and whereas the great Massachusetts litter cleanup helps organize volunteers from across the Commonwealth to collect and remove litter from our communities and public spaces, including roadsides, beaches, and parks, in an effort to keep the Commonwealth clean and beautiful. And whereas Keep Massachusetts Beautiful builds and sustains vibrant communities by creating clean, beautiful public spaces, reducing waste and increasing recycling, generating positive impact on the local economy, and inspiring generations of environmental stewards, and whereas the Commonwealth recognizes the role that all citizens play in keeping our 329 towns and 39 cities clean and beautiful for current and future generations. Now, therefore I, Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 to be Keep Massachusetts Beautiful Month, and urge the citizens of the Commonwealth to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance." So at this time, thank you, Governor Baker, I will entertain a motion to accept Governor Baker's proclamation to declare the month of April as Keep Massachusetts Beautiful Month.
So moved.
I will step down and second that motion. Any further discussion?
Just a thank you to Vicky Piazza for scheduling the cleanup day during the month of April.
It's like she's working hand-in-hand with the governor.
I hope it's a good day weather-wise.
Me too. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. April in Dayton is Keep Massachusetts Beautiful Month, and I will sign this.
We should ask Sue to post this in an appropriate place after Dean signs it, so that the public sees it.
Absolutely. So again, if you're watching, Vicky, I hope you're sleeping, but if you're watching... So, again, if you're watching, Vicky, I hope you're sleeping, but if you're watching, thank you.
When you see the rerun.
When you see the rerun, exactly. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for taking the time to organize the beautification of our town. I will say, Selecting Goulart, perhaps you'll agree with this, I do feel like at least Tremont Street has been a lot cleaner since the last cleanup last year. There's, there's stuff here and there, there's still litter, but I feel like it has raised an awareness, definitely around town.
Well, and the fact that, let me just say, somebody from out of town got caught dumping illegally, and the town took appropriate action. I also heard a complaint about Smith Street, sections of Smith Street, and I said, we can make a list of streets, just like we've got the streets from, lists from people who say the speed limit should be lowered on my street, or my, a section of my street, we would have a much longer list for, my street needs to be cleaned up. And the worst two, I think, are 138 and 44, which aren't ours to clean up.
Well, but the good thing is when we get those emails, we just forward them right to Ms. Piazza in her direction.
She'd have a full-time job and a crew cleaning up.
Mr. Commissioner?
I don't want to shed a dark light over it, but I can tell you personally, in the six years that I've been in town consistently, I've actually seen it get worse. So, although there might be areas of town that have improved, overall, I think the littering has gotten worse.
And I think they're true.
I hope it's not because of the increase in population or transient traffic, but I've noticed it much worse than it used to be, so. I'm not sure what we can do about it.
I've heard people say that too, so I definitely won't dispute it. I guess the hope is that, once people see so many people coming out and participating in the cleanup, they'll think twice about the next time they throw garbage, because they don't know if someone's going to take personal offense to that.
The police have said if somebody gets a plate number and turns it in, and it says, this person dumped whatever in this location, that they said they would pursue it, so. The other thing too is, quite frankly, again, Dayton Highway does such a great job mowing our roads. We have roads like the one-way section of Elm Street. There is so much green grass on either side of that one-way road, it looks like it's a boulevard. Not because the road is, the pavement is wide, because it's one-way, obviously, but because there is so much green grass along the sides, because they, with that new equipment, they, they do a good job mowing. The bad part of it is, you see all the trash. Because, but, so, if you think about what you see in the winter and are happy with what goes on, when you ride around in the summer and see when they've been mowing, our roads look like they're boulevards, and it's not because they're wide, it's because the brush is back and the grass is there, and...
Now, that's an interesting topic, and I don't want to be a dead horse, but there are people taking Elm Street to drive through town, so that trash is generated from our pockets. So, to everybody at home, if you're, you know, you take that little turn, and it's dark and it's quiet, and you throw something out the window, we're responsible for what we do in our own community, and if you like seeing that, why don't you throw it in your front yard, not on Elm Street.
Well, the other thing about that is, with the new construction down there, hopefully that building is going to have some effect on, at least that section of road.
And you throw enough of it on your front yard, you'll have a board health issue shortly. You'll be getting the call.
The neighbor will drop a dime.
Correct.
We'll forward that to the appropriate aspectus.
So, the other piece of new business I have here is to review, discuss, and act. We have a resignation from Mr. Connor Fergundes from the Green Communities Grant Committee. I'm crying. Okay, Mr. Fergundes writes, hello all, after serious consideration, I've decided to resign from the Green Communities Grant Committee. As much as I want to be a part of this committee, especially after a talk of widening the committee's focus to include other realms of sustainability, I have other matters that need my attention, and sadly, I don't have enough energy for all of them while also attending to the committee. He mentioned that he was going to finish up some of the meeting minutes and the agendas for the committee, but that he is sending in his letter of resignation, he will not be attending any more meetings. He'd like to apologize for the inconvenience this may have caused us all, but he hopes that we will all accomplish much, and perhaps in the future, that he may have the capacity to assist the committee in some, in some other way. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Fergundes.
I'll make the motion and thank him for his service to the town.
And I will step down and second that motion. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. We have accepted the resignation of Mr. Fergundes. Connor, take care.
One more community with a vacancy.
Oh, yeah, and we will add that to the lengthy list of committee vacancies. So, now, I would like to ask Selecting Goulart to report on the lengthy school committee public hearing on Tuesday, March 22nd.
It was a lengthy meeting, this will not be a lengthy report. I did attend the public hearing of the DR budget. Most of the budget hearing consisted of presentations by various administrators, principals, superintendent's office, the gentleman in charge of building maintenance. The actual budget, which, by the way, I did not get last night, it arrived today, it's so many inches thick, was not given to the school committee until after the public hearing last night. I think they were going to discuss the actual budget, but at about 9:15, at a meeting that started at 6:30, I really didn't see much benefit of staying, because I couldn't get a copy of it. It was delivered here today. So, the last meeting I went to as the, serving on the Financial Advisory Committee for DR, representing Dayton as an at-large member of the committee, the superintendent had told us that the original budget as drafted showed an 8.9% increase. The budget that was eventually distributed after the hearing last night shows a 3.4% increase, and there will probably be additional reductions made. The budget as it stands right now is $40 million, 156,000, $336. I don't know why that budget was not available in January, because the budget gets formulated beginning in October, by January, there is a budget. Obviously, I was not alone, because the school committee didn't get it. I personally felt that during the question-and-answer period, I couldn't, I couldn't ask any questions, because I had, I had nothing to review. The budget, we have one copy of the budget to share with the finance committee, we're going to put it in a binder, and I am going to go through it and see if I have questions. Most of the information that I found out last night was during the questions from the There were a number of people who spoke in opposition to the reduction or elimination of a foreign language teacher in the Portuguese program. There was a proposal, I think at the 3.4%, to eliminate one guidance counselor at the high school, and both parents and students spoke in opposition to that, because it would leave three counselors to pick up and share the load that was previously divided up between four counselors. There was concern about, and I believe the number was 18 paraprofessionals being reduced, I think across the system. A number of students, current students and former students, spoke about concerns about cuts to the business department, cutting accounting courses. One gentleman was a CPA, and he talked about the importance of having high school students get involved with business courses now, because it, if it's what they're going to be pursuing, the fact that they've had these courses at high school, and they specifically said at Dayton, Rehoboth in one case helped a young student get into Babson, which majors in accounting. As far as, the 3.45%, as it currently stands, represents a $1.3 million increase over last year's budget. 25 million of that 40 million represents salaries and negotiated benefits. 3.7 million represents contracted services, that would be things like, I believe, transportation. $942,000 was for supplies, $10 million was for health and, health insurance, the life insurance program, and FICA, and probably Medicare taxes.
Is there anything left for the students?
No, no. I won't know that until I get it to the board.
Yeah, we haven't, we just got it.
Uh-huh, right. Projects that are planned, the good news is, and I think I reported this before, there were no plans for FY18 to do anything with what would be capital costs at Dayton Elementary. They're going to reconfigure five classrooms into three classrooms, which will free up two classrooms, which will house students that are over there, so they're saying with reconfiguration, they will be able to handle the enrollment at the elementary school. So, no capital cost at the elementary school as far as whether they're portable classrooms or something like that. So, the superintendent told me that at the advisory committee meeting, but that was reiterated. They've already replaced boilers and Univents, the ventilation systems, they've got an energy management system, they've done weather stripping, they're looking to become, to go to phase three with the photovoltaic solar systems, which they say should reduce electricity costs by 75%. If they can do that, that's outstanding. Specifically, capital projects that would affect the town of Dayton would be the roof, the rest of the roof at the regional high school. I think most of you know that Dayton approved that, finishing the roof, and Rehoboth rejected it, so, yes, the roof is leaking.
We know.
The Palmer River and Beckwith schools, they're looking for a roof for Palmer River, and windows at both Palmer River and Beckwith. Again, those would be Rehoboth capital expenses. In looking at, at the regional high school, they get the wood chip fired boiler, and they talked about the train, T-R-A-N-E, train, performance contract, which results in, resulted in 6.8 capital improvements to the building without actually having to borrow money to fund that kind of work. They've added a full-time school psychologist, they said they're not eliminating Portuguese, but the majority of people that spoke about that said, that's not what we heard. They're eliminating a special ed coordinator, the guidance counselor, but they want to add a director of student services. I'm not sure, again, what the position is, because I didn't have anything to look at that would help me understand that.
Any administrative cuts?
Not that I could see.
As I understand, they're the most expensive professionals that we pay at the schools.
I didn't hear anything about, and, no parent spoke up saying, save our administrators if they were paying, but I did not...
That contingent was quiet.
I did not hear anything about cutting that. Oh, there was one other comment by the, I'll call it the clerical secretarial union. A proposal is that school secretaries, meaning the elementary school and the middle school secretaries, will not work all summer long. I wasn't aware they did that, because 100 years ago, and I worked there, the only secretaries that worked throughout the year were at the high school, because that office remained open. The elementary and middle schools, the secretaries had to work through, one week after the closing, and they had to be in at least a week before the opening, but then the building principal determined when they needed that staff to come in. If there was a mailing that was happening, if there was a workshop for teachers and there were materials that need to be prepared, this principal would just contact the secretary and say, I'm going to need you to come in. The person who was representing the clerical, I'll call them the clerical workers, the school secretary, said that by making those cuts, so that they would only work the school year plus maybe a little bit before and after, that they would, they could be costing those employees $10,000 to $15,000 a year in wages. As I said, I didn't realize that was going on now. I know before, quite frankly, when enrollment was higher, they were not working, at least when I was there. So, I don't know how it came about, but that was another complaint, that people, there would be a reduction in staff during the summer when the offices are closed. I don't know all the details, but that sounds like it makes sense. But, again...
Commissioner?
Yeah, if I may, just quickly, and check, the only concern with that, logistically, is there is a lot of use of those buildings even during the summertime. So, you know, that, that person being in that office is usually the point of contact. I've been there personally where that occurs, so, I mean, it's none of my business, but it seems like the buildings are used, and I make sure that I stop them occasionally, because I know there's people in them, just to make sure that...
Right, and we have to, and this is another Board of Health thing, we have to inspect the summer camps.
Right.
Rehoboth, when I was in the system, Rehoboth ran a summer, I'll call it athletic camp over at Beckwith, and it was a wide range of ages, but it would be upper elementary into middle, and the programs were segregated by the age of the children, and all of that would be set up in advance, and there were, obviously, there were always custodians in the building. So, if the program, and it was an outside organization, it wasn't a school program, he rented facilities, but ran the program and arranged everything ahead of time, they negotiated what the, I'll call it rent, because I don't know what else you'd call it, what it would be. And, so, anyhow, these clerical cuts, that was, that was another thing that was complained about. A lot of people complained that the cuts that were made, they just found out about. As I said, I sat there listening to this, and I found out about it. That budget not coming out sooner, I have no explanation for, because I know how it used to be done, and I know it was available in January, and you, the budget was always in the hands of the school committee before you went to the public hearing. You don't give it to them after. I mean, they're our elected representatives, they haven't seen it, how do they represent this? How do they discuss it? How do they sit at a budget hearing and try to have input? I really don't know.
Didn't anyone in the audience ask what they were cutting? How did they know what they needed to cut, or what they chose to cut, if they didn't have a budget?
Well, I did not get the impression that the school committee voted on any of these cuts. I got the impression these cuts were made with administration. I don't know how else it could have been done.
And it makes sense why, now, why there were no administrative cuts.
Well, it also explains why the co-presidents of the union were not happy, the teachers' union, the woman representing the clerical union was not happy. I didn't hear anything from the custodial union, but I would have thought, somebody would have said, you're going to privatize our, our jobs? But, I don't know. Hopefully, all those answers are going to be in that bundle that came in tonight.
You may find some.
The other thing I would mention is, in today's mail, we have the breakdown of assessments for the upcoming FY18 year. The operating assessment for Dayton K-12 is $8,981,113. The only budget that's out from the state is the governor's budget, so I would say, these numbers are based on what the governor's budget contains. Obviously, his budget hasn't passed, there will be a House budget and a Senate budget, and sooner or later... and sooner or later, hopefully before June, uh, they'll come up with a budget that they all agree on. So these numbers that I'm giving you are their best guess at this point in time, because there's no final state budget. They're still talking about the supplemental budget that they've got to deal with for this year. All right. The Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District is, no, the total, all right, I came to the Dayton K to 12. There's a Rehoboth K to 12. As I said, we're at eight million, nine hundred thousand. Rehoboth K to 12 is sixteen million, three hundred eighty-four thousand and change. The Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District Total Operating Assessment is twenty-five million, three hundred sixty-six thousand, a hundred dollars. The Dayton K to 8, which is our two schools right here, is nine million, two hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, which would cause you to say, "Wait a minute, you just said the Dayton K to 12 was eight million, nine. If it's K to 12 and it's eight, nine, how can K to 8 be nine million, two?" Uh, this, folks, this is the first time I've seen this tonight. I'm raising the question myself. If the full budget K to 12 is eight point nine, how can just K to 8 be nine million? The math, it doesn't work out anyhow. Um, the Rehoboth K to 8 is ten million, nine hundred twenty-three. Now, this makes sense, the Rehoboth K to 12 is sixteen million, three hundred thousand, and their, their K to 8 is ten million. That makes sense. If the Dayton K to 12 is eight point nine million, how can the K to 8 be nine million? That's, should be part of the original number, so there's something that doesn't make sense there. Take all these with a grain of salt, folks. Um, but this is the official notification we got. Needless to say, this will be straightened out before there is a number on that warrant to be voted on. So, um, the capital, Dayton's share of the capital assessment is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars. The Rehoboth capital assessment is three hundred forty thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars. And the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District Capital Assessment is six hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred fourteen, which I believe are the two K to 12s added together. Unless that amount is the actual bond issue, that may be the case. I do know, having spoken to the town accountant today, the formula used to determine capital assessments is a combination of student enrollment and the equalized valuation as established by the Department of Revenue for each town. In looking back, the town accountant told me, for the past three years, the percentages haven't changed. This says the FY14 equalized va- equalization to verify for FY16 from the Department of Revenue, and they give these percentages. But these percentages haven't changed. Obviously, I believe equalized valuation is issued every two years. And we know that the October 1st enrollment, which is the official reporting time as established by the state, is October the 1st. It would seem every two years, equalized valuation should change, and we know it changed, the enrollment changes October 1st. So anyhow, the, uh, the town accountant said she will look, look into, because she showed it to me, and I said, "I understand what you're saying, I can explain that." That percentage, by the way, based on this piece of paper, to determine capital assessment shares for each town, Dayton's percentage for the past three years that she looked back is thirty-seven point four-three-five-zero percent, and Rehoboth's is sixty-two point five-six-five-zero percent. So anyhow, the town accountant's going to look into those percentages to see, how could they have remained stable for the last few years? That formula has not changed for, uh, capital assessments since the first bond issue was issued back in probably nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, when that school was built. The formula has not changed, but we all know, valuations go up.
Mm-hmm.
The equalized valuation of the whole town, they go up, and we know that the, uh, population, school enrollment fluctuates. So, um, this is what I have to date, I have no answers, I got a lot of questions, I'm going to go through the budget and see how much I can get answered. I would expect we're going to be getting more information. If you have, um, I would say, watch the rest of the regional high school meeting, I did leave, um, somewhere around, I don't know, three, uh, nine fifteen, nine twenty. The entire time I was there, there was not a solid budget discussion. Um, so I would say if you have more questions, contact your, uh, elected school committee, maybe by the time you get in touch with them, they will have had a, had a chance to review the budget. Uh, if you catch the rest of the DR meeting on channel ninety-eight, uh, there may be more there. But, um, this is, this is, it's kind of a, it's what happened. I can't, I can't tell you the facts of the matter, I can tell you this is what happened last night, so there'll, I'm sure there'll be more information. That's all I have.
Thank you, Selecting Goulart. I just have one little piece of information. Uh, I did receive a, uh, email from the Office of Speaker Pro Tempore and State Representative Patricia Hadad, uh, letting us know that the town of Dayton will be receiving, uh, two hundred and thirty, around two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in chapter ninety-eight for the next fiscal year budget. Uh, I suspect as they hammer that out, that will probably change a little bit, so, uh, I will keep everyone updated.
Very good.
Very good, I know, I'm hap- Tom, Tom will be happy.
We'll take everything they give us in chapter nine.
We're trying to build sidewalks now, so.
That's right.
Moving right along, acknowledgements. Uh, we have an acknowledgement of an anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of thirty dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the anonymous donation to Primetime of thirty dollars.
I will step down and second that. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We are acknowledging the anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of thirty dollars. Thank you very much. And at this time, if we have a living, breathing member of the public present that would like to make themselves known, please, uh, feel free. You have earned your input.
Or if you have any money, uh, if you have any information on the money of the budget at DR, we'd all like to have it.
I'm pretty good with numbers, but I want to know who's on trust at that last one.
Well-
That's ridiculous.
It's not a mathematics instructor, that I can, I can assure you. Uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I will step down and second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned, it is ten twenty-five.
Thank you, Cable. Everybody have a good weekend.
Thank you, Cable. Thank you, Karen.
Good job, Selecting Goulart.
Commissioner Agar, thank you, Mr. Taylor.